I'd like to call to order the January 14th session of the Suffolk City School Board Meeting and ask Maya Carter, student from John Yates, to come forth and offer the Pledge of Allegiance. Maya?
Will everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Maya. We have certification of the closed meeting, please.
Resolution of certification of the closed meeting of January 14th, 2016 pursuant to Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended.
So move. Second. Board members will please vote.
Public speakers on agenda topics. Do we have any public speakers out there wanting to come forward on any of our agenda items? CNN will go on. Reports by the superintendent, Dr. Whitney.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to the podium, Mrs. Beth Ann Bradshaw, our Public Information Officer. Ms. Bradshaw?
Evening. Each month, we take this opportunity to share with you and our viewers at home some of the excitement and wonderful things that happen in our schools each and every day. Tonight, we wanted to recognize Louis Garland, who's a science teacher at John Yates Middle School. We invited him tonight, along with some students and some colleagues, to share with you about the Rockets to Race Cars Initiative. He was one of just eight teachers from across the United States selected to work with NASCAR driver Jimmy Johnson to share NASA connections with thousands of race fans. So, Mr. Garland, come on up and tell us the rest of your story.
Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
I appreciate letting me take time off from school. Most of it was during the weekends and such to volunteer with NASA in the Rockets to Race Cars program. It's a elementary, mainly elementary, middle school program funded by NASA, except it's not funded as in volunteer teachers. We're all volunteers that do it. We had teachers that came as far away as from New Mexico and Delaware and Maryland, depending on which track we went to. My wife and I went to three different tracks this year. We went to Richmond, Dover, and Miami and worked with a bunch of folks from NASA and teachers from all over those areas in the United States. We had to do training as far as in webinars prior to go into each of the different tracks that we went to, because each track, we had to do something just a little bit different. Had to do something just a little bit different in the training. Most of the trainings coincided with each other as far as the training for elementary schools and such. Presently, we're getting ready to, I'm getting ready to, train and go through with the middle school science meetings in March and then the elementary science teachers in March also to go through the, some of the things that we're going to demonstrate this evening that we do at the track. This is the tip of the iceberg as far as what NASA does with schools. This is the tip of the iceberg as far as NASA, what NASA does with the community. And I'd just like to demonstrate a couple of different things with a couple of my Chrome students that we have from John Yates. And we're starting out with... We have, we do have, we do have a Jimmy Johnson, the six-time world champion race car driver, his actual, one of his actual suits. And we have this on display. At most of the tracks we went to this year, it was blowing in the breeze because it was pretty breezy at some of the tracks. But we have, we also had astronaut, astronaut suit that was there that you saw, most of you probably saw in the write-up that Beth Ann Bradshaw had did for the school system. And the girls will be demonstrating, Maya and Brianna, will be demonstrating with the gloves here in just a few minutes also. Some of the items that we did, some of the items that we did, well, let me introduce our friends and colleagues that we work with. This is my wife, Avis. She volunteers with me in everything that I do with Chrome. Not every meeting with Chrome, but in setting up with everything that we do with Chrome as far as field trips and everything else that goes, and works with me hand-in-hand, literally hand-in-hand, at the NASA, at the NASA tracks and such, the race car tracks. Maya Carter, a Chrome student, and a, hopefully a future project lead the way. She has her recommendations in and such. Brianna, seventh grade, two-year Chrome student, and she was also at the State of the Schools. Most of you saw at the State of the Schools. And then we have our couple of NASA representatives here. I have Rosemary Smith, who lives here locally and went to John Yates, and Denise Aranda, who travels with us, and she was in Miami and such with us also. What we're going to be doing this evening, what I would like to show you, one of the first things that I find the most interesting and the easiest way that I have found to teach rotation and revolution is using NASCAR. And one of the NASCAR, excuse me, one of the NASA representatives who was unable to attend tonight, I call her Ms. Bonnie, she was tasked with designing something similar to this. She actually designed this board. And we are going to try to see if we can get this board for our elementary students, because it is so easy to teach rotation and revolution. Students understand rotation of the Earth. It takes 24 hours. It's one day, day and night. Students understand it takes revolution. It takes 365 days to go around the sun. But most of them don't understand that they coincide with each other. So what we do is we have race cars. Jimmy Johnson is the one who provided us with a white car and a blue car. And what we do is we explain to the students that the wheels are rotating, just like the Earth is rotating, as the car is going around the track, which is the revolution. So depending on what track we're going to, we talk about, and we actually, when we get the teenagers there, we turn around and we have them calculate how, how many times the wheels are going to be going around for rotating about each, about each cycle going around the track. Some tracks are 400 laps. Some tracks are 500 laps. You figure out there's five-foot, a five-foot basis for each wheel, times that and such. So there's actually calculations and stuff, and the students seem to grasp it very quickly. But the biggest thing for elementary schools is that the tires rotate as the cars go around the track each time. And that's a concept that I find it's easier to show and explain to them with this, using cars, using a track like this. So we are going to be checking with NASA about getting something like this set up for elementary schools, hopefully here, starting in Suffolk. Want to show, next thing we want to show is, we did training, is the, is training like astronauts. And we do that with various methods. What we have here, the young ladies are going to, NASA reps are going to hold the clothesline, and the girls are, when we have, at these NASA booths, we have long, long lines. So basically, we try to get as many kids as possible in there that are the same age group and such. So we have to determine very quickly what, what grade they're in and such like this. And it all depends on whether they're, like this year was in, like I said, it was in Richmond for Virginia. It was in Dover, Delaware, and then Miami. So between the SOLs, the DSTPs, and the FCATs, you know, between the three different states, most of them all coincide with each other. Between, you know, we obviously are using SOLs. They're using FCATs in Florida and such like this. So we bring those in. We ask the kids about those particular, what they're doing in school and such. But we also have to train, when we talked about training like astronauts, we have to show them different things that the astronauts have to do. And some of them are fascinated with it. So, girls, if you would like, you want to hold the clothespins for? What they're going to do, most of us can open up clothespins with our index fingers and our thumbs. What they're going to do, like astronauts, they have to use all 10 fingers. What they're going to do is they're going to practice and compete with each other very quickly on just using a thumb and a pinkie, okay, to see how many they can put on in like a 30-second period. And again, while they're doing that, what we do at the NASA booths is we have little competitions. If the lines get really, really long, we might have three or four people. Go, girls, go. You're on the clock. And what we do is, it totally depends on how many we have in the, in the line as such, but we may have three or four people competing with each other. We love to have brothers and sisters competing with each other. And, and we do it for like a 30-second period or so. And if we have short lines, like at the beginning of the day or toward the end of the day or such, then what we do is we do have them using all, all 10 of their fingers and such, and they can see how hard it is.
Why did the astronauts use all 10 fingers?
Because when they're doing spacewalks, not only do they have to wear a set of gloves similar to the ones that the girls will show you in a minute, but they have an astronaut glove that goes over top of that. And they have to do this with the gloves on, because they're, when they're doing spacewalks, they have to handle the, the materials and such on the spacewalk.
Oh, okay.
So not every, everything is attached up there, but it can float away extremely easy with no gravity. All right, who won? Okay. As you can see, that goes very quickly. They do, they do get to, what they do is they end up going home and they tell their cousins and such like this, you know, this is what I did and such. So one of the other things that we do, come on over this way, girls. Let's do the puzzles. What we do is we have puzzles, very, very, I have a, we picked up a couple of little puzzles. We got a race car puzzle here for the lower-level kids, you know, usually kindergarten, first and second grade. The other puzzle piece that's over there is a little bit smaller pieces. What they do is they turn around and they have a pair of gloves on, and they have to turn around and figure out how, what's the easiest way to pick up the puzzle piece, to turn around and put in there to connect it. So not only are they using their eyes to coordinate, at the same time, they're trying to get the feel of it, they're trying to look at the same time to see what they're trying to put into place. So it's a combination of doing a couple of different things at one time. You'll notice that, you'll notice they're sliding, they're sliding the puzzle pieces off. Most of the teenagers learn that very quickly. Elementary kids usually don't very quickly. They're trying to pick it up, pick it up, pick it up. What we do at the tracks is, with the larger teenagers, you know, the ones that are in the seventh, eighth, ninth, 10th grade and such, they all want to get involved, is we give them the large astronaut glove, and they can't even pick up, they can't even pick up a puzzle piece without sliding it. So that's how the puzzle pieces go. With the, all right, girls. The other one that we do is checking their reflexes. So many people, especially teenagers nowadays, everything is on controllers, back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. So what we do is we turn around and we, actually, we bring measurements into this. So for the teenagers, we're using the metric system on our rulers. For the lower grades, we're using inches on the rulers. The rulers have both on them. And what they're doing is they're going to turn around and they're going to check their reflexes to see how fast they can grab the ruler. Or if they can grab the ruler. Once they grab it, once they grab it, we measure it and such.
There you go.
And then they're so proud, so then we make them change hands. Okay. So, no, that's okay. And again, this is just the tip of the iceberg about what we do at the NASA booths. There is so, so much more things that we have up there. When we actually do get to present, there's only a few people that actually get to present at each of the different tracks. My wife and I went to three different tracks, but it was, it was all the way until the last track before we actually got to get involved with the Jimmy Johnson presentation that was there. The Jimmy Johnson presentation, each of us as teachers had to turn around and put something together, and it all common, it all came together, just like we do with our differentiated lessons in our classroom. Everything we do, this, 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 and this. And at the end, the last few minutes, we bring everything together. Well, with the Jimmy Johnson items that we did, we did everything as far as balance and, and such. We do a lot more with Bernoulli's Laws, Bernoulli, as far as air pressures and such like this. And with the, the combination of what we have here today is just, like I said, it's the tip of the iceberg. What I'd like to do right now is turn over to our NASA reps, Rosemary, Rosemary and Denise, as far as letting them explain to you how they get the teachers involved and such with, with the NASA presentations and, and such.
Good evening. My name is Denise Aranda. I am from the Office of Education at NASA Langley Research Center. Thank you for that lovely demo. One of the things that makes this Rockets to Race Car program so powerful for us is that we've noticed that it's a very tangible way to be able to teach very complex science, such as aerodynamics and physics, in a way that's really fun and really interactive. We've done activities like this in all over the tracks, all over the country. We've been able to pull talent from some of the best teachers in the best school systems, example A. And one of the things that we've learned is that it really does help teach kids aerodynamics. One of the things that we find challenging is getting kids to understand an airplane and lift and drag. But everybody's ridden in a car. And so the platform that NASCAR provides to us has been really wonderful in being able to tie some of these complex science in a really fun and interactive way. Another thing that makes us really unique is that we're able to pool and collaborate with teachers all over the country. Rosemary is an EPD specialist, and she'll talk a little bit more about that. But I just want to say, on behalf of NASA, thank you so much for supporting this program. We really had an impact with thousands of students at the tracks.
Okay. Good evening. As Denise said, I am Rosemary Smith, and I'm an education specialist at NASA Langley in Hampton, Virginia. I do work with a lot of teachers. My passion and my role at NASA is to reignite the passion in teachers. So as, my goal is to get those teachers reignited so that they can bring that passion that they have back into the classroom, because we're, you know, I'm a former teacher. I know that there are times where it's just, you're just working and working and working, and you get lost in that sometimes. And so for me, and my role, is to reignite that, what they once had way back in the day, to right now and say, hey, let's make this applicable in the classroom. Let's tie in NASA. Let's tie in race cars, NASCAR, and make it fun and interesting, and make it relatable, and make it real world. So what I do is I train the teachers, and my goal is to get those teachers back in that right mind frame to touch those students as they used to. So, matter of fact, I started right here in Suffolk, as Lou mentioned. I am a product of Suffolk Public Schools, very proud to say that. I am very proud to say that I now work at NASA Langley, giving back to my community. And I'm so glad and so proud to be here tonight representing. So thank you for your time.
And I have just one last thing. So up on the screen, you'll see our Rockets to Race Cars website. We also have a couple of handouts over there. One is a lithe that'll give you a little bit more about the correlation between rockets and race cars. We also have NASA stickers, because everybody loves NASA stickers. So this is a really cool site. It's really interactive. Once you go here, you can start clicking on some of the, of the, these little plus signs. Text box will come out, and they'll tell you about how NASA has influenced directly NASCAR. And you can see it's through the way that we have the suits that are developed that are fire resistant to the tire pressure and how we recycle things. It's a really great educational resource. And we are always looking for teachers to come participate. Again, all this curriculum is tied back to the SOLs that we have distributed. So with that, I guess we'll take any questions, and please feel free to take some NASA stickers on with those.
Questions or comments by board members?
I'd like to ask one. What were you majoring in undergraduate work?
Sure. That's a very interesting question. I am an engineer, so I have a minor in mathematics. My bachelor's is in mechanical, and my master's is from Virginia Tech in materials engineering. Actually, I've been an engineer at NASA Langley for several years, and I've recently been on detail to Office of Education, and I think I found my passion. I feel really strongly about being able to bring this engineering concepts in a really relatable fashion.
Thank you. I thought you were a high school student at Fred.
Why, thank you. I appreciate that.
I just want to make a comment. I hear some wonderful things from my house about the Chrome Club, and so I'm excited about the fact that you all have that and the students are working there and excited about it. So, great job this evening, and thank you.
Presently, 64 members at Yates.
Mm-hmm, at John Yates. Wonderful. Thank you.
I'd like to say hello to Mr. Garland again. I loved working with you and hope everything's going well there at John Yates.
Mr. and Mrs. Garland, we appreciate everything you've done for us at John Yates. I know that I was there for your thermo heating event, and it was a whirl taking at that time. But what I'd like to say is, if you look, they're all women here that are involved in this program. And that's important, because women are underserved in the science and technology area. And we're going to encourage all our women here in the Suffolk City schools to get involved. Correct? Thank you very much.
All right. Next on the agenda, you can see under good news report, or actually, reports by the superintendent, is capital improvements update. I'm going to call to the podium, Mr. Terry Napier, our Director of Facilities and Planning, to let you know just where we are with our capital improvement projects.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight, we wanted to update you on both the elementary, the new elementary in the Northern End, and also the middle school. Page one of your packet shows you the schedule that we presented to you last May. The blue line indicates where we are today. That is our July to January 2016 phase where we are in design. And currently, we are at approximately 65% completion on the design for both buildings. That's pretty much right where we expected to be at this time. So as you can see, everything above that blue line has been completed. Everything that is below that blue line is what is ahead of us. But right now, we are right where we expected to be. So that's good news. And I'm going to jump ahead just a little bit to that. Currently, both school sites, both the one in Burbage Grant and the Florence Bowser site on Ansemun Parkway, the city has those under contract, so we have no concerns with land acquisition at this point. The architectural and engineering contract was awarded to RRMN, and you are familiar with those folks back in July. Design completion, we are nearing that phase now. That's January and February on our schedule. Just one note, both school buildings are prototypical designs, meaning that we have been able to fast-track those a little bit and get that done in about six months rather than the usual nine to 12. What we were not able to fast-track is the site designs. Each site is unique, so there is no prototype to go by, which may alter these dates two weeks, three weeks. We're not concerned about that at all because of the construction time that we've built in there. But we may be a little bit off as far as when we start, actually go to bid, and when we start construction by possibly two, three weeks. This doesn't concern us, and I hope it doesn't concern you. Everything looks good for our completion dates, and that's what we're after. So what we're trying to do right now, get everything finished by February, which is next month, award a construction contract in April, begin construction in April, and that may run into the first part of May, which is perfectly okay. In June and July, and this is important for us, we are going to move the mobile units away from Bowser, move them over to Driver, along with furniture and equipment that is currently at Bowser. It is our intention to move all of those students to Driver next school year so that we can make room on that site to build the new building. And when we look at the picture, I'll show you why that's necessary. As I said, in September, we're hoping all of those students, we can move them over to Driver. The construction phase, we hope to complete that in July of 2018, and we are going to occupy that building in July and August of 2018. And we have no doubt that this is a very doable project on both sites. Any questions about schedules?
I have a question about Oakland's, the primary site where the water backs up. Is that going to be able to be taken care of in the construction and the architectural design?
Now, let's go to that one first. This is the site plan for the new elementary school that you, you can see up here. The flooding that you're referring to currently takes place, if you look at this picture, there's two sets of dotted lines. There's the outer set, the red set. That's the new property boundaries. If you look at the smaller set, that's the current Florence Bowser property boundaries. And you can see we've, in the bottom right-hand corner, that's Bowser. In the top left-hand corner, that's the new building. The, the current flooding occurs where the parking lot for the new building is going to sit. There are stormwater considerations. There are design considerations that have gone into this new building as far as site. That will eliminate all of that. We have a retention pond that will be on-site. We will collect all of our stormwater drainage there. It will no longer sit in a parking lot. It will be very similar to what we had to do at Pioneer. So we're not concerned about that flooding issue anymore. That's going to go away.
About the present area where the ball fields are concerned, are we going to be able to have the same amount of ball field space there with the new, new sites?
At Bowser?
I'm sorry. The elementary school.
The new elementary school, he said, are you going to have, still have enough room for the ball fields that are existing?
Yes. We are adding approximately nine acres to the current site. So we will still have playgrounds. We'll still have the ball. Currently, there's one ball field at Bowser. The rest of them are at Driver.
Right. Are we going to be able to have those as well?
Yes. I think the cities, and I'm not speaking for them, but in discussions that Dr. Whitney and I have had, once we turn that building over to them...
If we turn that building over.
If we turn that building over to them, I think one of their considerations is possibly turning into, that into an athletic complex, beyond what's currently there.
Turning what? I mean, what building?
Driver.
Okay. So the new elementary school is going to also, is going to replace Driver and Florence Bowser?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Could I ask a question? What is the prototype for the middle school? You said, I know, the prototype for the...
It's Paige, it's Paige Middle School in Gloucester.
Okay. And the prototype for the elementary school are the ones that we already had?
Hillpoint and Pioneer.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Yes. And it will be not identical, but very close.
Right.
It's larger. We're building this one for 1,000 students as compared to 800 at Hillpoint, 650 at Pioneer. This one will be larger than both of those.
What about the middle school?
The middle school will be for 800, which is smaller than Kings Fork Middle School. Square footage, it's about 125,000 square feet. So it will be a larger building than what we currently have at Yates, but the population will be smaller, which is good. So any questions about the Bowser site? At this point, it's looking good. There's going to be some roadway improvements done there. Currently, we do not think we'll have to have a traffic signal, which is good. That saves us about a half a million dollars.
I have a question. In the Bowser site, how many acres total does that include? Do you have any idea?
It's, it's 12 plus nine, so it's about 21 total. The new site. The current site's 12.
Right.
So we're purchasing that strip around the left and the top. We're just adding that to the current Bowser site.
Middle school, how, how many acres are there?
Middle school, and we've got that up on the screen now.
Yeah, it looks big.
Well, it's not.
Oh, okay.
Which is why we're too small.
Well, good sketch.
Yeah, but it fits good. It's, I think it's about 15 acres total, 15, 18 acres, something like that. I'll have to go back and get that number for you. But the footprint of an 800-student school built in the same fashion as Paige Middle School in Gloucester, which is almost the exact same size, fits very well on that site. RRMN went out and they did a lot of work beforehand to make sure that we could fit that school on there. And it fits, as you can see, it fits very well. So we're not too concerned, even though it's a little bit smaller site than what we would normally use for a middle school. It works just fine for this school.
As you can see, you can see that we have the soccer field. We have the softball field, as well as hard surfaces that are required as well.
Of parking?
Yes.
And there's a question about the parking, but what has happened with the parking requirement? In the past, we built parking lots as large as we could build them based on the city's formula. And they provided us a formula whereby we could have X number of parking spots at any given school based on the staff numbers. I believe it was two per teacher, something like that. Recently, the city has gone back. They have revised that. And there actually is no maximum as far as how many we can put in there now. And they've upped that formula number, I believe, from two to four. So it's made a huge difference. We can essentially now put in about as much parking as we want, as long as we can pay for it, which is good. So there's going to be more parking here.
But Bowser, there won't be the problem. There is a Pioneer.
Bowser's going to have a whole lot more parking places than Pioneer.
We had considerable discussion about that. We had considerable discussion about that. The formula is what was the challenge previously, but now that that formula has changed, it will allow for expanded parking lots.
It will, and even though Pioneer was an issue for us with that parking, we put as many parking places as we were allowed to put in there at the time. And Dr. Whitney went back, and we have added, I believe, 23 spaces, and we had to go back and get permission to do that because it went above what that formula allowed us. Well, that formula's changed.
May I ask, in 2018, when we have both of these schools in place, how many years from that will we be looking at a module unit on a lot?
I have no idea. I'm afraid.
I mean, I know we've done some study as to population growth.
We do use projected growth and projections. We use the Weldon Cooper formula as well as looking at the number of developments, but it has been very difficult to really pinpoint when a mobile unit will be there because we're so transit also. But as we look at the developments, we can see that this is not going to solve all of our issues, specifically in the Northern End, so we may find ourselves having to revisit it as far as revisiting rezoning lines as well.
All right, just so you can get a first glimpse, that is an artist's rendering of what the new middle school will look like. It's not in color yet. We didn't want to bring you a color picture because we haven't chosen colors. We're doing that tomorrow, so maybe the next time I'm here, I can bring you color.
Thank you.
But that's what it's going to look like, and that you're familiar with. It looks very much like Hillpoint and Pioneer. We'll do a little bit of something different on the front, so it has its own character, but it's very much like those two buildings.
And I would like to point, stress that, that while we are using prototypes, we do realize that these buildings are their own, so it will be a matter of some minor changes inside and outside so that they can have their uniqueness. But it was some minor cost savings by using the prototypes from Gloucester as well as the ones that we've used here.
And it allows us to fast-track design, which is going to bring us some savings in terms of how long it takes us to build it and how quickly we can get started. Any questions about any of that?
Mr. Napier, in your photograph of the middle school, what is the large parking area at the top left?
That is staff and guest parking, and the parking lot to the right, that's bus.
I mean it for location in the, what is the parking area that's adjacent to the school grounds?
I believe that was part of the former Joint Forces facility, I think. It's an empty building right now.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Napier. We appreciate it.
Next item under superintendent's report is a transportation outsourcing, privatizing services update. You may recall that a few months ago, I did share some research provided by the Virginia School Board Association regarding outsourcing of transportation. We also talked about that not being necessarily my recommendation, but you did ask that we look at a division comparable to our side, somewhat local, which is Roanoke City. I'm going to call to the podium Mr. Doug Dewey, our Chief of Operations, to share with you those results and his findings regarding the comparison as far as Roanoke City schools and Suffolk Public Schools as far as transportation is concerned. Mr. Dewey.
Evening. If you'll turn to pages seven and eight, you'll see information that Mr. Baldwin and I received by talking with, and in some cases, received emails from Roanoke City. Most of this information is in numbers, so I'll share and summarize some of this for you. In speaking with Roanoke City, the officials there, we spoke to operations and also transportation, and they gave us some background as far as Roanoke City and the reason that they outsourced transportation, which was approximately 70 years ago, and it was because of the age of their fleet and the cost to replace their fleet. They had a concern about their buses and to replace the buses that they had that were very outdated, in some cases, they said the word unsafe. It would have cost them 11 to 15 million dollars to replace their buses, so they began the process of outsourcing again approximately 2009. The charts that you have, the chart that you have on seven and eight, I'll summarize for you. Again, it is just some numbers for you comparing the two systems. Roanoke City is 43 square miles where we are 430 square miles. They do have approximately the same number of students, but in a smaller area. They have a few more schools than we have, 24 elementary, middle, and high to our 19 to 20, 20 if you're including Turlington. They have approximately 75 buses, and again, 70 years ago, those buses were outdated. The fleet was sold to the vendor at that time and still is owned by the vendor, so they did again sell their buses. We have approximately 200 buses in our fleet. Both divisions lease, they are leasing space, we're leasing space with the city in Roanoke City, or the vendor leases space from the school division. Currently, in personnel, Roanoke City schools, they have only two employees involved in transportation, the director and assistant director. All the others are vendor employees. They have 142 employees, 125 of them are drivers. We have 182 staff members, 163 are drivers and aides. When you look at the routes that we have, we have 367 routes, regular daily routes, compared to their 135. If you turn to page eight, comparing the budgets, Roanoke City has a budget for transportation of 11 million compared to our 9 million, which is our 7.7 million budget plus our replacement budget, which is 1.3. So again, they're 11 million to our 9 million budget currently. Looking at salaries, benefits, and retirement, the bus drivers in the system, they were introduced to VRS three years prior to outsourcing. The drivers did lose the VRS opportunity, but were provided comparable benefits by the vendor, and they have currently 129 of their employees that are participating in what the vendor provides compared to our 92 of the 106 full-time drivers in our division. And lastly, salaries, the rate for drivers at Roanoke City is between $14 and $19 an hour compared to our 12 to 19, whether our drivers accept or included. So we wanted to provide you with some information, primarily numbers comparing the two and giving you some background as to Roanoke City's participation in outsourcing, and we'll entertain any questions that you have.
If I may add, I think the, two of the most important things to me, while the school system is about our size, we can see the square miles is a big difference as well as the number of routes, and I believe they talked about charging per route. So you can imagine the cost as far as it's 11 million for them. We're currently, our budget is 9 million. You can imagine the added costs, which I know it's not just about savings, but considering the differences between the two divisions, I'm not so sure it's a comparable way of looking at it. But I do bring your attention to the next few pages where it talks about privatization of transportation, and I know we've talked about this before. I think there are more disadvantages than advantages, in my opinion, and therefore, I stand by the recommendation of not moving in this direction, but obviously, we're willing to take on whatever you all direct us to.
Questions by board members?
I'd like to just thank Dr. Whitney and Mr. Dewey and Director of Transportation for gathering the information. You've answered a lot of questions. I certainly appreciate it.
I have one question. What happens when bus drivers are not present for duty in Lynchburg or Roanoke? I'm sorry, Roanoke.
Similar to what we would do. The vendor would double up, they would have sub-drivers. The process would be very similar to what we would do. It's controlled by the vendor rather than the school system, so that portion wouldn't change.
Well, I'm saying that what if they can't find enough drivers?
They would fall into some of the doubling up solutions that we do.
They don't go out and, they don't have surrounding areas where they?
No, they would have the opportunity to secure additional employees. I mean, they would do that. They do the hiring and the training. They, similar to what we would do and what we would do through our HR.
It really just shifts the responsibility. I think the same challenges would occur, and the way of handling it is the same as far as doubling up students, having to wait until that driver gets back if the driver's out sick or additional routes are made or a shortage of drivers. That's, based on the research that I've read, they've run into those challenges.
Yeah, I think, yeah, the question would be not what would they do, but since 2009, what did they do? I mean, that would be, obviously, a private company, you know, they would, hopefully, they would do what they had to do. If they had to bring in people from another city, obviously, in order to survive, they're going to have to provide drivers every day, but you know, what happened? The only, the bad thing about it is that if they don't provide those drivers and they don't get the job done and you fire them, you have no buses. I mean, because you sell your buses to the company, so you're starting over again if you don't use them and go back to the old system. So there's sort of no going back.
I think I spoke earlier, when this topic came up, about having worked in a system where the buses were contract buses. The problems were the same. People were still late, people were, the bus drivers did not have the benefits that they had in that particular system. They didn't have access to the benefits that the drivers who worked for, would work for the school system or employees of the school system might have. But I don't think there's a magic bullet with regard to this, and I don't care whether it's contractor or whether we do it ourselves. I think that the problems will still occur. There will still be traffic problems. There will be buses that break down. There will be people who are late. There will be people who are on time and people who are inconsistent, and so I don't see a benefit, and that's just having experienced both sides, I don't see a benefit to that. And as Mrs. Bouchard brought up, once we get rid of our buses, we don't have a choice with regard to it, and that private company did charge by route, and they were at that time $1,000 per route, and if you multiply that times our 300, that's been 20 years ago. So I have no idea of what it might cost now, but like I said, I don't see any benefit.
We've tabled this twice, I think. Do we need a vote on this? No, no vote. Okay, thank you.
Could I ask one more thing?
Sure.
I mean, I would like to say regarding transportation, maybe I've been in a hole somewhere, but I haven't heard a lot of complaints this year about transportation.
That's encouraging to hear, and I would agree with you. While it's not perfect and we still have some issues, I think that we have some right people in the right place. Our drivers seem, have appeared to be more committed as far as coming. Absenteeism isn't as high as it has been. We are still looking at whether or not we need to make adjustments for next year, and part of Mr. Baldwin's advisory council will be looking at some of the recommendations or brainstorming and bringing to you some recommendations, so hopefully, if indeed we choose to, or you all choose to make a change with the start times, we'll be able to do that by either May or June, I think, but that's a work in progress. It's encouraging to hear that, but we do realize that there are still some areas that we need to work on as well.
Thank you.
The last issue on the superintendent's report is the calendar of special events, and while we have a number of things listed, two things I want to point out to you, the non-traditional career and technical education extravaganza is on February 18th, hosted by our career and technical department as well as the advisory team, and of course, school board appreciation month is February. We have lots of appreciation events, and so I won't highlight all of them, but we did want to point that out. And that concludes the superintendent's report. Back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Dr. Whitney, I'd like to have all our board members look at the consent agenda and see if anything needs to be moved for items later to be discussed.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Board members will please vote.
Business, Dr. Whitney.
Yes, I'm going to call to the podium Jaclyn Chavis, our Deputy Superintendent. We do have a revision to the already adopted or approved, I guess it's adopted, calendar for 2016, 2017. I'll let Ms. Chavis explain what that minor change is, but it's a necessary change.
Good evening. The original calendar that you approved included, if you look at December, and this is on page 13 in your notebooks, the month of December, originally, the break was, the winter break would have started on the 19th, so the 16th would have been our last day of school for winter break, and the students and teachers would have come back, all of us would have come back on Monday, the 2nd. We've since learned that the 2nd would be a federal holiday, because the 1st is falling on a Sunday, and we typically then observe that same calendar with our employees, and so we're proposing now that winter break begin on December 20th, I'm sorry, the break would actually begin on December 21st, with the last day of school being the 20th. We come back then on Tuesday, December 3rd. So we're actually going from 10 days of actual school days off, two weekends, to nine days off, and we are looking at starting, ending on that Tuesday, so they would not impact student attendance too badly if we came back on a Monday, if we went left on that Monday. That's the change for that calendar.
I move that we accept the revisions that Ms. Chavis has suggested.
Second. If board members will please vote.
Business, Dr. Whitney.
Yes, normally, we bring to you the spring of each year for new course proposals for the upcoming year. We did receive a grant in which it will require us to have a new course this year for second semester, and so I'm going to have Mrs. Chavis explain to you what this new course is all about. Ms. Chavis?
This course is part of the GEAR Up program that we currently offer at John F. Kennedy Middle School. It's part of the GEAR Up grant that we've shared with you before, and as part of that, we've committed with or signed on with AVID, which is, as you can see in the description of the course, advancement via individual determination, and this particular course would be an elective course. AVID program targets those children who are in line or would like to go to college, would need additional support and assistance by way of organization, maybe college visits, motivation, similar to what the access program does. And so again, this course will be part of that. Courses offered with the GEAR Up program to our current eighth graders, and it will be offered beginning second semester.
Questions by board members?
This is an action item?
Yes, so we need approval here. It is a new course offering, so can we get a?
I make a motion that we approve the AVID course for eighth grade.
Second. If board members will please vote.
Could I ask a question about the course? How are you going to select students and get them interested in taking it? Are the parents going to be notified, or what, how do you plan to do that?
It would actually be the current eighth graders which are required to take the course because the seventh grade, there were seventh graders last year, and that's when we started the GEAR Up grant, and GEAR Up will track then that cohort of students all the way through college, actually, and so it would be targeted just for those students who are part, where eighth grade students are part of GEAR Up. And then actually, I'll be able to offer it to And then actually, all be able to offer it to other students. However, we're really looking at making sure those children who are part of Gear Up are enrolled in that course.
Okay, thank you.
Before we go into business by board members, I'd like for all board members to look at the informational items for review only, and see if there's anything that they have any questions about. Now, we'll go to board, business by board members. Ms. Skeeter, we'll start with nothing from Ms. Skeeter.
Right now, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Buck? I'm sorry. Mr. Mitnick?
No comments at this time, thank you.
Listen, we had a great year, we're looking forward to another great year. We started off the right way, and I hope we continue.
Thank you. Ms. Barrow?
Just one comment. Before the holidays, there was an event at Booker T Holiday Garden of Lights, which I attended, and I wanted to commend the Booker T staff for getting that together. And a special thanks to Ms. Lisa Rath, who assisted Santa that night. She's one of our employees, and I didn't know she had so many different jobs she could do, but she did an excellent job. And also, I want to commend Councilman Tim Johnson, because he attended that and supported that. And he told me the reason he showed up was because one of the students had mailed him a card and invited him personally, and he was very touched by that. And I think that personal touch went a long way. And he said he really loves Booker T, and he plans to attend a lot of things there.
I have no.
I have a few things. I'd like to thank all the board members for their hard work this past year, and their having reappointed me as the chairperson. I want to thank you personally, and all of you for your work in getting the budget passed last year, which our teachers are enjoying, and also for the hard work on getting the SOL scores where they are. We've worked hard together, and I appreciate everybody's work here. Thank you very much. Also, I'd like to commend the central office staff for the work they've done in all the different areas, especially those curriculum specialists who've gone out of their building every day to go visit schools and teachers and students. That's a big part of their job, and we know that. Thank you very much again. With that, we're going to ask, Mr. Wall, would you?
Excuse me, Chairman, we have public speakers on non-agenda items.
I'm sorry, do we have any public speakers on non-agenda items out there? Okay, we do. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mitnick.
Welcome, sir.
Chairman DeBrensky, Vice Chair Copeland, member of the school board, Dr. Whitney. Good evening, and Happy New Year to you. My name is Wendell Foster, and I'm president of the Education Association and alternative ed teacher at John Yates Middle School. EAS would like to thank you for taking the necessary steps in last year's budget to consider the recommendation from the salary study. Most employees already raised, and they'll take home pay this school year. Unfortunately, despite our success in the classroom, we are falling behind our neighboring school when it comes to compensation for our employees. Those in the 10 to 15-year range receive the highest of the pay raises, where those at the top only received a modest increase. But the cost of living increase is the same for everyone. We are far from achieving our goals, and that is to bring every employee's salary to our neighboring school district. The teachers and staff must not fall behind, as we will continue to lose more qualified teachers and staff to those other school districts. I'm not here to say that we do not appreciate the time and effort that the superintendent and the school board did with increasing salaries and maintaining good quality teachers for the great school system, because indeed, we do appreciate all that you've done. However, after years of stagnant salaries and rising insurance costs, the greatest need still remains salaries increases. We know what the salary study recommended last year, but as you consider this year your budget for the coming school year, we ask that you continue to advocate for the employees of Suffolk Public Schools in the 2016-17 school budget, which is, which, when it's presented to the city council for their approval. The staff of Suffolk Public School is passionately dedicated to the students, just like Mr. Garland was here, the teachers in the classroom, the administrators in the building, the bus drivers, the cafeteria workers, custodians, and other staff members in the school district. Our students will compete against the world for jobs, and Suffolk must ensure that its students will be ready to compete successfully, just like the two young ladies that was helping Mr. Garland a few minutes ago. That means reducing class sizes, providing meaningful training for instructional staff, having a full qualified teacher in every classroom, fully successfully, funding successfully dropout prevention programs, rethinking the school calendar, and making sure that schools are fully funded. Suffolk Public Schools is blessed to have a committed workforce who has done more with less for the past few years. Public schools are job creators. Now is not the time to shortchange our students. So we ask that you include in your budget proposal this year a step increase for all employees as a top priority in your budget. On behalf of EAS and employees of Suffolk Public Schools, we would like to say thank you for the great job that you do to ensure that our school district is moving in the right direction. Good evening.
Any other members of the community like to speak? Any other public speakers? If not, we'll ask our lawyer to give certification. We're in a closed session.
A motion is needed to go into a closed meeting to discuss the following item and subject pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended. The discussion and all consideration of student appeal number 1516-9, which is authorized by Section 2.2-3711, one of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended.
Second. Board members will please vote. Motion carried.
We'll be going into executive session at this time. Thank you very much.